Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee King.
Here.
Trustee Marcus.
Here.
Vice President Weekly.
Present.
President Wells.
Here. All right, I'll start with the report out on closed session from today, May 14, 2025. The board discussed the performance evaluation of the superintendent and no action was taken. Good evening, welcome to May 14th, 2025. It's our regular meeting of the Redwood City School Board. Buenas noches. Si se une a la reunión online y necesite interpretación en español, por favor llama al nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete y presione ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno y el signo de número. Si asiste a la reunión en persona, solicita un transmisor situado al fondo de la sala. This is our first regular meeting in May, which is a month of appreciation. So before we get going, I wanted to start by sharing appreciation for our principals, for Principal's Appreciation Day, our teachers, who had Teacher Appreciation Week last week, our classified staff, their appreciation week is next week. Executive Assistant Day, which I think was the celebration that was here, and really appreciation for all of our staff. It's, you know, a month of appreciation and I don't think we can take enough time to be able to say how much we, you know, are thankful and appreciate the work that's done. And then thank you, everyone that's here tonight, online or in person. You're really joining us as our partners in education in the board, which does encourage all members of the public to participate and provide comments on issues of concern, regardless of whether they are on the agenda. To speak, please complete one of the speakers cards that's located in the back of the room, or you can fill one out online if you're online. And if you do fill it out in person, just grab the card in the back and then fill it out and bring it up to Evelyn. If you're addressing a subject listed on the agenda, you'll be called at the time of that item that when we're about to consider it. And if it's not on the agenda, we'll call you shortly during oral communication, which comes right after the board approves the agenda. So with that, do we have any changes to the agenda? All right, can I get a motion to approve it?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, all in favor. Perfect. All right, now we're on to oral communication and we do have a few speakers cards. So we will start with, is this Amika, Amika Giom? Kiom. Hey, sorry, there's a, yeah, microphone to turn on. And then I want to mention that just to be fair to all our speakers, we do limit public comment time to three minutes per speaker. And there's a clock that'll be on the front and you can probably see it once you start talking. Yeah, it'll show up on the big screen when you start talking.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Good evening, Amika Giom. I was once the principal at Sequoia Union High School District, but this year I am COO for Peninsula Bridge. I just wanted to spend a moment in the spirit of celebration to update you all on what we've been able to do. For 35 years, we were only a middle school program. For the last few years, we expanded our program to be 13 years. And Redwood City knocked it out of the park. Y'all had 87 students nominated. I wish we had more money and more space. We're only allowed 20 from Redwood City, but I did want you to know what those 20 have to look forward to. And in the very back, I put some names of our college scholars. I've had two principals cry from pride because they recognize some of their former students and they couldn't believe how far they've gone. Typically, we're 100% four-year universities because of the FAFSA debacle last year, if I may call it that. Some did have to go to community college last year, but you can see here all the colleges they get into. Our goal is they graduate with less than $30,000 in debt. And so we have all these partners all across the country who are providing first-gen low-income students with access to four-year university degrees in almost zero debt in many instances. So we do start in fourth grade, inspiring them that they can go out of state if they feel comfortable, and we will be there to help them. We actually have one colleague in Connecticut, so she can jump on the train and make sure families feel safe about where their students are. I also wanted to share that, as we know, this is actually what brought me to Peninsula Bridge as a staff member. I've been on their board for 11 years. As a principal, I was so proud of all of our college persistence. We got it up to 87% in my old high school, but they were coming back without jobs. And as many of you know, first-gen low-income students, 70% Pew Charitable Trust has said that they are not using their degrees. First-gen low-income students are underemployed. 92% of our kids graduated and are now employed full-time because of partners such as those that you see here. We start in fourth grade talking about the trajectory. They need to know in fourth grade that if you want to go to a STEM field or you want to be a math teacher or a science teacher, you need to have geometry by ninth grade. So we start that in fourth grade. And then what we do is we start the career piece because they all say they want to be an engineer. Do you know the difference between an electrical engineer and a mechanical engineer? That's what they do in fourth grade. And so we do all of that work and then starting in 11th grade, or actually in ninth grade, they do career awareness, but internships start in 11th grade. Our goal is that they graduate with three internships under their belt because to close the gap for social capital. So I just wanted to thank you all. We've been partners for decades and I just really appreciate, we had great success this year and I thought some good news is in order and there's much to be proud of. So thank you all for your support and we continue to have beautiful, you know, Redwood City students in our group. Thank you.
Thank you, Amika. Thank you for sharing the successes that Peninsula Bridge is having and of course, the students that are going through the program. Okay, our next speakers are Saoirse, Maya and Nia. I'm assuming they're all coming together, is that right? Okay. And I know you're experienced speakers, but I'll remind you that there's a time limit, three minutes and you'll have the clock that you can see on the TV.
Hello. Hello, my name is Maya Rosales. I am here today to show my gratitude for the board for allowing advanced English classes in Kennedy.
Hello, my name is Saoirse Rafferty and I'm here to deeply appreciate and I'm here to say that I deeply appreciate all that the board has done for this, done for the Redwood City School District students and that I deep, we as a class of 2025 at the Mandarin Immersion Orion. We deeply appreciate all that you've done for us and we are very happy that you have implemented advanced classes at Kennedy and so that we can fulfill our dreams as whatever we become as adults. And in my experience, I think that advanced ELA will help us get on that track.
Thank you so much for doing the advanced ELA because I'm really excited to learn more about English and learn more of a more advanced vocabulary that can help me achieve my dreams.
Thank you.
All right, thank you Saoirse, Maya and Nia. It was great to, Nia, it was great to hear about what you're excited about. Glad you could share that with us. Okay, our next speaker is Finbar.
Thank you. Thank you for having advanced ELA and thank you.
Great job, thank you Finbar. Directing to the point, I appreciate it. And our next speaker is Megan.
I wanted to second the kids' comments and also just express my appreciation for all of you. It definitely takes a huge team in this district and I know there was a lot of emails, a lot of research articles. You guys were sent to homes of research and I know that you guys really considered this issue deeply and carefully and I, I think it's the right decision for all of us. And I just brought some little gifts for everybody who had to read all of my emails and petitions in the past month. Just some little salad dressing, oil and vinegar from Sagona's, which we all know and love. But I just wanted to say thank you guys so much. I, you guys did a lot for the district and it was hard to consider this night. Thanks for all the extra time you wanted, that went into it. Thank you.
All right, thank you Megan. All right, let's move on. We have our approval of the bond consent items. There are a couple of items here that will pass with one motion. Can I get a motion to approve?
I move to approve the bond items.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, now we're on to bond program action items. The first one is 10.1, it's the adoption of Resolution 24, which are going to be leaseback agreement with block construction for the HVAC projects.
Yeah. Board, yeah, thank you, my President Wells. Joining us tonight are Martin Cervantes, our interim bond director and director of facilities, as well as Nick Olson from VPCS, our bond program manager. And joining us via Zoom is Eric Van Pelt, Vice President of VPCS, who works on our account as well. So that I will turn it over to them to discuss item 10.1.
All right, thanks for the introduction. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Baker and staff. I'm happy to be here with Martin to present 10.1, the adoption of Resolution 24 and the leaseback agreements with block construction for the HVAC projects at Adelante Selby, Hoover, Roosevelt and Taft schools for the summer. So I just wanted to start with a little bit of process for this selection. We did a request for qualifications and proposals at the beginning of March. To start, start off proposals, we received proposals on March 26th. Part of the leaseback process is once we get those proposals and it says in the resolution, we score those based on several things. Their technical expertise, price point, of course, management and staffing approach, their history of meeting project schedules, their history of claims and litigation, and then an interview is the last scoring criteria. So we decided to interview all three firms that proposed on April 7th. And after those interviews, the interview committee and scoring committee, which was composed of the construction management team, the district and our design team scored all three firms. And Block was the one that came out ahead for the best overall proposal. And part of that was based on their robust pre-construction services that they were offering. So one of the advantages of leaseback is that we can do pre-construction services with a contractor and for a fast-track project like this, for the summer, we know that we have to order equipment in advance. The board thankfully already approved the order of the HVAC mechanical equipment, but there's also electrical equipment that's long lead time, controls equipment that's long lead time, and then some labor and equipment to actually accept the large mechanical equipment that were, we already ordered and securely store it until we can install it. So that is all included in their leaseback agreement that's on the board agenda tonight. And then the process is this will kick off the subcontractor bidding period and we'll come back to the board in early June to approve guaranteed maximum price. So that bidding process per contract, it's a, what we call open book bidding process. Well, we'll get to see all the bids that they get from subcontractors and negotiate and negotiate allowances in that contract as well. So we'll, you know, it's a bid, but also a negotiation as part of that. So as part of tonight, the bond team is recommending that we approve the resolution and the leaseback agreement for this project.
All right, thank you. Do, does anyone have questions, comments? Yeah, Jen.
It was just more for my own clarity. I saw that there was like a school time stipulation document. Is construction happening in the summer or is it running into the school year?
This is during the summer.
Okay, so it's just in case there was maintenance or things that needed to happen during this.
Yes, the, the construction schedule is to happen during the summer. That's a standard in our contract, just in case we have schedule overrun and we need to work around school.
Thank you.
Yep.
No, okay. I know I support this leaseback agreement. I want to thank the bond program team for, you know, your partners at Van Pelt for, you know, bringing forward this thoughtful presentation. Yeah, I particularly appreciate the, you know, the competitive best value selection process that was used here. I think it's really good to have, you know, our community Cs that were committed to strong stewardship of bond dollars and I think that's really, really helps with it. The open book, thanks for explaining the open book contract because, you know, as we move towards guaranteed maximum price, we kind of want to make sure that it's really transparent also and that, you know, we can do whatever we can to make sure we stay disciplined about the spending. And finally, we've talked about this extensively as a board, but it probably is worth repeating, you know, better temperature control and cleaner air in our classrooms is directly going to contribute support, contribute to student well-being and readiness to learn. And so it's a really practical investment. It's, it's beyond practical, it's essential. And so I think if nobody else has comments, we can take it to a vote then. Someone would make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 24.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, but don't go far because we're going to move on to 10.2, which is the approval of the agreement for purchase of the mobile air conditioning units for the charter school sites.
Yes, so again, happy to be here to present 10.2, which is an agreement to purchase mobile air conditionings from Spot Cooler for the charter schools. These are the same mobile units that the board approved previous to spring break and were delivered during spring break. So these match those units and this order will be for the charter school classrooms.
Questions or comments?
And the charter schools have been read in on these plans, so they, they know what to expect when?
Yes, or we, there is not a delivery schedule yet. I believe they know that we are ordering temporary mobile air conditioning units.
Okay, because I toured KIP this last week and they were pretty fuzzy on the details. So let's make sure that we close the loop with all of our charters.
Yep, we'll do.
And I recall that they were here at a meeting when, when I think Dr. Baker had told them that yes, this is happening and put that in. Yeah, 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 okay. Yeah, this is another one, I support it. We, you know, in the past, we did that evaluation already between leasing and purchasing. So I think we already know the, the decision-making, the criteria that goes into that. You know, and this does make a reasonable follow-through on the promises of Measure S, which, you know, the charter communities were very helpful in making sure that got passed. And so, you know, I think if nobody has questions or comments, is there a motion to approve?
I move we approve this, 10.2. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, we'll move on to the consent items. There are 10 of them and we're going to approve them all in one vote.
I move we approve the consent item.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, on to the action items. So this is now 12.1, which is the approval of the pilot of Benchmark 2022 English-Spanish Language Arts Curriculum at Taft and Garfield Elementary Schools for next school year. Anna, is this to you?
This is me.
All right.
So we are, we are having this opportunity. I know there's a lot of questions in terms of the benchmark. So we currently have it. We know both our curriculums, both for elementary and middle school are expiring. Their license expired this year at the end of 25, so we have to renew them. And so when we wanted, started looking into renewal for Benchmark, they brought in the new curriculum, some of the adaptations they've done, which actually align more to the science of reading of what we're doing now versus 2017. Our focus next year for K8 is going to be reading comprehension. So we decided before we purchased, because what would happen is if we adopt this, we have to adopt the entire curriculum. So we wanted to try to pilot it first to see where we're at, especially the way that the changes were in the K2, which were very powerful, the teachers that got to see it from Taft and Garfield were very excited, like, oh, these are some great changes that have been made and they really wanted to try it. So we gave them, we thought, what a great opportunity to have our bilingual schools pilot both English and Spanish so that they can help us make a decision moving forward if we adopt the new curriculum for the next four years, because then we'll be up to 28, up again for a new adoption. So this would be, we wanted to make sure that we're giving them opportunities and it's aligned with what we're doing next year with reading comprehension. So they've actually updated a number of the reading comprehension for upper grade as well with more poetry, which was something that we're lacking. And so one of the things the teachers are asking for, we would like to have more analysis work on poetry. So they've definitely made some adaptations on that, so we're lucky. They've made changes to how they actually roll out. So they'll be coaching some of our teachers, they'll be hands-on to help support our teachers go through some of the things that weren't available before and in the, when we adopted. So they definitely made some changes. So we're excited that we have two schools that actually 100% of the teachers said, let's do it. Usually we only say a group, right? And they were all, let's just do it as a school site. So we're, instead of doing it for two months, we decided we're just going to do it for the year. They'll have the materials, they get to use it, they get to really explore and have some more input as to how we move forward in the district. So we're looking forward to hopefully get our schools back on track with using, and a lot of them do, are starting to use more of it now, but we want to make sure they have the resources for this pilot. That's our two target sites. So our motion is if you guys can approve that tonight, that would be great. So any questions?
Anyone have a question? David?
Just want to clear, knowing that this is a pilot, I understand that we're probably tracking similar sort of metrics on the efficacy. Are there any sort of concrete goals that we're looking at to determine whether or not this specific version of the curriculum is something that we want to pursue? Or are we more going with qualitative feedback based on?
Probably a lot of qualitative feedback and looking at, one of the things we're also looking at is how do we approach the assessments in here that we haven't used in the past? So having the Benchmark, current benchmark has a lot of assessments. We have certain sites that use those assessments regularly and we have other sites we don't. So with one of the, with one of our goals is how can we embed those assessments better to be used specifically around reading comprehension that we haven't been using in the past? So we want to try to streamline those across the district next year for reading because that's the area that we have found on our I-ready that reading comprehension is lacking. And so because of that, we already have this, we're bringing this on. So for our, all of the school sites, we're having a reading comprehension training. K2 will focus on Benchmark on the other side and then we have a reading comprehension 3.8 with CRLP on a specific protocols that we're going to be implementing, 3.8. So our whole focus is that, but part of our goal is embedding the Benchmark as our reading comprehension and moving that forward through their assessments and then trying to track how we can see the efficacy of the programs.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, any other questions?
I don't have questions, I just want to say, you know, I appreciate the fact that everyone at the school sites wanted to do it instead of, like you said, a group. So I appreciate the teachers to be, you know, I don't want to say brave, but just put all their efforts to try something new. So I appreciate that. Thanks to your team.
Thank you, yeah. On top of that, this is their third thing, that fourth thing that they'll have done in three years. So yes, I appreciate that they're taking this on.
Yeah, it seems a lot more than just a materials refresh and looking at the comparison. It looked, yeah, it looked like a much more like deeper shift in there. You know, the diverse authors, poetry in every unit, culturally responsive material, texts tied to SEL, it just seemed like a lot of really good changes in there. Is that kind of what everybody's, is that what got people excited about it?
I think what they were looking at, so the teachers got to see, Garfield specifically, they even got to have, you know, they were looking at a lot of the materials. I had all the materials available to them. We didn't have the upper grade, but third grade was like, if this is third grade, what's it going to be in fourth grade? So they were just really excited to go through the manual and see what was laid out for them. Like I said, a lot of changes in K2, they actually have, we're looking forward to see how their writing program really expands because that's something we don't have quite pulled out. And this has some things that we're looking at, does this writing really provide what we need for our students in a robust way? And so both these sites have a lot of, Garfield will be, we're creating those systems at Garfield. Taft has a lot of things that are put in place, but Taft does use already current benchmark much more. And so we were hoping to see the differences for them. What are they finding in the differences and how they are looking at the resources? So yeah, there's a lot that's changed.
Yeah, yeah. And then I know that it'll be like new first year of implementation and you said there's new assessments and everything in there, but I hope that we can be very intentional about how we do measure success. We have I-ready, of course, we'll get that, but, and I don't think everything's going to be just an academic measure. I think it's how engaged are they, like, does it, you know, I think there's other things that are not just academics that I hope that we're able to. And maybe that's what the qualitative part that you were talking about, but are they engaged enjoying the texts, you know? What's it like having poetry in every unit? Like, I've no idea. Yeah, it'll be interesting to see how, how, how we measure the success of it.
And how should, yeah.
Yeah, and how they react to it, yeah. So the academics are important, I don't want to diminish those, but I think there's so much more that's changing here that it would be, you know, be neat if there were a way to say like, yeah, we're, we're seeing the progress from those things too.
Yeah, so I think it goes hand in hand with our focuses next year. Reading comprehension.
Yeah.
This feels pretty low regrets. It's all moving in the direction we'd hoped.
Yeah.
Curriculum we're familiar with, not blowing things up, like, this sounds great. That's how.
Yeah. Do you want to make a motion to approve?
I move we approve.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Let's still meet. So next is 12.2. These are the SIPSS for Adelante Selby, Roosevelt and Clifford.
So again, these are our next three of our SIPSS. You guys had the opportunity to read through. Any questions on any of the SIPSS on these school sites? Very familiar to you guys by now. And the last five come next, next board meeting.
Go ahead, did you have questions? Yeah.
No question, I'll just say that I do appreciate it because I know that there have been a lot of questions the past rounds. I really appreciate that you guys are all, the district staff are focused on incorporating that and adjusting and it's a long process, but super important for, for me, I think probably for the support. So I just want to say that I appreciate the going with the flow of it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, I appreciate the work that goes into them as well. I didn't have any questions coming out of it either. So if everyone's on board, let's make a motion to approve. Can someone make a motion to approve?
Sure, I will make a motion to approve 12.2.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Perfect. Was that all in favor? Yeah, okay, just to make sure. All right, next is on to 12.3 and that is the approval of the Orion Growth Plan. Dr. Baker, yeah.
Okay, Anna, if you could put the slides up and then we'll...
Oh, and do you want to, we have, we do have one speaker here. I don't see the speaker here, okay. Well, if they come back, I'll, yeah. Okay, we'll do it after the presentation.
So tonight, the Orion Growth Plan and what we are going to do is if you go to the evening presentation, the next slide. Come on up. He didn't give you, the, the, oh, he didn't give you the page. Okay, now right after that, there we go. So this evening, we're going to go over the Orion story, the Orion Growth Plan progress and then the recommendation that I'm going to bring forth to you. The memo was quite lengthy, very lengthy, and I apologize for that. But Jorge and I had discussions about length and going back and forth, back and forth. But it, I think if you read it, there was a lot of information that was presented to the committee. The committee had a lot of time to give input. We also did a survey, which I'll give you a little bit of information on this, but I believe it was a really good process. And we had between 20 and 25 committee members there. Not maybe all at one time, sometimes it was all 25, sometimes it was 23, sometimes it was 18, but it was a good process and everybody really had a feeling that they were able to contribute and be heard. Okay, next slide. I'm just going to follow you and continue on to the next one. All right, so let me give you a little background. So, and we did this with the team, with the whole committee. Here you see 1932 Jefferson Grammar School and later John Gill Elementary School opens there at 55 Avenue del Ora. And then in 1947, Monroe School opens at 815 Allerton and that's important to remember. And then in 1969, Monroe School closes. 1984, Orion, an alternative elementary school, a parent co-op opens at a former Monroe school site at 81584. But prior to them going to that 815 Allerton site, they were up on Granger Way where the old Adelante used to be and there were two schools on one site while... While Orion, the eight fifteen Allerton site was getting refurbished because eight fifteen Allerton used to be the district office. That's where I started at the district office in a little closet. And it was a closet, right, Martin? It was a little closet. Um, but, but I had a great windows and I had a door that I'd go out to a patio and Liz Wolf was right next door to me in the other closet. And a, a very thin wall was between us. So that's a history about where Orion has been. And just wanted to make sure that you were all aware of that. Uh, next slide, please, Anna. So, uh, there you go. Orion alternative story. So let's back up a little bit about this in regard to the Mandarin immersion piece. Yes, it opened twenty fifteen sixteen. When I became the superintendent, the Mandarin, Mandarin immersion program opens. But there was some heavy lifting that took place two years prior to this. Uh, there were a group of parents and they were not necessarily our parents that brought this to the superintendent at that time. At that time, I had changed from H R and gone into curriculum and instruction. Um, and during that meeting, they, these parents had gone to another district, a neighboring district where a very good friend of mine is right now uh, as the assistant superintendent to ask them if they would have a Mandarin immersion program. The superintendent that was there at the time absolutely said absolutely not. Our superintendent was interested, um, but concerned in regard to having the number of participants, bringing in another program into the district, which was entirely different, which none of us had experience with except for the dual immersion Spanish program that we had in place already. So twenty thirteen fourteen Linda Montes was at, at the district office with me and she was not here full-time either. It was part-time that she was here and she was also at Adelante full-time as the principal. So I had her, the superintendent at the time in the board said, yes, she could do this if she wanted to be at um, Adelante halftime and be working at the district office halftime, not only working with the and at that time called English Language Development Department, but also um, helping out in special projects. And this turned out to be a special project. So Linda and I did a lot of research on Mandarin immersion and what other districts had put into place a Mandarin immersion program. At that time, there was one in San Mateo. And the one in San Mateo is, um, Anna, it's called it was College Park. And then College Park, and now it's College Park, right? And so we visited College Park, but we also went to Cupertino because Cupertino started many, many years ago with uh, a Mandarin immersion program. We also um, brought into play a consultant who started that program in Cupertino. And she um, showed us different other school districts throughout the Bay Area that had a Mandarin immersion program. Some were really great and some really poor. And we could see what we would like to have and what we didn't want to have. We also went to Case, which is in San Francisco, Chinese American School. Um, which is a very good program, very, very expensive, um, know that because of family members. Um, and we're, we're really excited about what they could deliver. We definitely will not be able to deliver it in the manner that they were delivering because of the extra resources that they had in play, but really gave us some really good ideas of how to create a program to start it small, similar like we did with um, Adelante Selby at the time was Adelante when Liz started it very small. It started as a kindergarten classroom, then it went to a kindergarten moved to first and so forth. So we felt that we had that experience and we could start it in that manner. The other piece that um, was brought into play was with the consultant, consultant that we had. She had a lot of information from Taiwan at that time and had a direct connection with Taiwan. And so was able to give us different types of materials that we would be able to explore. And she would help us with that exploration. She would, if we went in the direction of creating this program, would also be at the school site several days a week to help our kindergarten students and, and of course, the teachers that we would be hiring with that program. So after several discussions with the Board of Education at that time, and neither of you were on the board at that time. Uh, it was a lot of deliberation back and forth. Um, the board was concerned that we didn't have enough knowledge. We didn't have enough experience or the expertise. We had the expertise in Spanish. Myself, Linda, of course, and of course Liz at the time when that program was put together. So that was not an issue for us. But to find that expertise in Mandarin, they were very concerned about it. The consultant we had at the time was very good at saying, don't worry, I can get that for you. So she was on contract to um, find our teachers to and I, I give Catherine a lot of credit because Catherine sat in those interviews. Linda sat in those interviews. I went in and I didn't know what was going on, you know, and did Linda and uh, but our consultant was there and could select the teacher that we thought would be the best to help us out. And provide, she also provided a lot of the training for us. And then we started out um, small and we are where we are today. It was an experience that the board the board understood school of choice. The board understood being a district that was innovative and would try something new. But then um, I was reminded when I became the superintendent, because I became the superintendent the fifteen sixteen, that they said you need to make these dipsticks, these checks and making sure that we are progressing. If it's not, then we're not going to continue the resources in this program. So we did, uh, Linda and I came up with how we would do this with our consultant. And it showed progress over the first couple of years and people were interested. Now, remember at this point in time, as we moved into this program, we became community funded. And that meant no more inter-district transfers. The board said no more. Due to the fact we hadn't, we needed to utilize our finances for our students who were here in the Redwood City School District. So um, that could have brought a bit of um, angst to the program, but as we continued on and as you see in the next slide, let's go to slide six. Here is our enrollment numbers as of uh, May ninth, twenty twenty-five. This is what the board was concerned about all along. And um, knowing that the program was doing very well, how are you going to make sure that you're going to maintain this program for the school district and it's not going to be resources that were going to be utilized in a manner that could be utilized at some other school site. So um, Jorge and his enrollment team have done a very good job of making sure that the word is getting out there. That we do have this program. What we also want to do is do something similar to what North Star does. And Winnie has agreed to do this, to go to different school sites and do um, I'm going to say ticker show on the road. We used to do this many years ago and we had the magnet schools. And it would be, I'll never forget the first time, it was, the parking lot still exists where Sam Trans is. We had tents, these big circuit, circus tents. And each school was there to display their school and to solicit more parents and kids to come to them. Um, we're not going to go down that road, but uh, what we're doing now for North Star is North Star goes out and it starts meeting with others' schools. And meeting with other parents in those schools who may have an interest. So I know that Winnie wants to do the same thing coming up next fall because she understands the numbers and how the numbers are playing out. We also heard that, you know, um, this evening, you heard from the students that will have a different language arts experience. We're not calling it advanced. We're just going to come up with another term for it. But it is going to be, there is going to be criteria in that uh, Wendy has been working on very closely with a, a teacher that we have. A special teacher for that, for those students. And I believe hopefully it'll be two classes, I'm hoping. Uh, that this criteria is going to be that something that they have to adhere to before they even get in. And we're having a parent night to understand that. And if your child cannot keep up, then we have to have another meeting with the parent. It's not working. So with that being said, that road to Kennedy with that experience, and you've got advanced math at Kennedy already, and we have it at our other six, eight schools too. We should have parents who will become more interested in making sure they maintain the Mandarin immersion program and continue it at Kennedy. And then after they're done with Kennedy, that's up to the Sequoia High School District to December, what they're going to do. But now I think it makes them more at ease. Uh, even though I believe Kennedy is a great program and once they get there and they start seeing the electives, that's what's going to um, we're, we're I give credit to uh, Chandra who's doing this master schedule at this point in time to get that in there and to make sure that, you know, you're going to be taking this and then you may not have as many options for electives. So because you're taking this course, but I'm hoping that when you see these numbers and you see the numbers um, uh, for the Mandarin immersion program and you see those how small that they are at the upper grades, that those, they'll stay. Knowing that this program, you've got the Mandarin immersion program, plus you have this enrichment or whatever, however the title is going to be for that program for these students who are basically high achieving students in the area. So here are the numbers now, and I'm hoping that they grow. Let's go ahead and go on to the, you can go on to um, reasons for the Orion growth plans. So enrollment shifts over time between Orion's two programs, parent co-op and Mandarin immersion. That's been going on for several years now. It was going on when it was just Orion, when it was just Orion by itself. Um, numbers would go up, numbers would go down regarding enrollment. It, it um, has always gone in that manner. The number of classrooms at Orion campus to keep both programs. And that is if, when you read the memo, that is really what people wanted. They wanted both programs. And if they were going to go to a different school, they wanted to both go to the same school. But you needed to have twenty-nine classrooms in total to come up with the number of classrooms we wanted for each each um, program. Uh, I already have addressed the growing concerns about the mid-upper grade attrition and the community cohesion. Hopefully that'll dissipate with what we're providing at Kennedy. Because at Kennedy, when we looked at the numbers of students who at this point in time have the criteria that we were looking at, we had what sixty-five students, fifty-five? Fifty-five at that criteria that our students fit, not only not only talking Orion students, but we're talking students that feed into Kennedy. So there's a total of fifty-five that fit the criteria at this point in time. So I'm hoping with that model that we can continue the um, number of students so that we can continue the programs. It'll, and as I said previously, I'm hoping also that parents will see, here is something for them at Kennedy. We should stay here at Orion in the Mandarin immersion and in co-op because there is something to meet the needs of those students. Uh, the next slide. I'll let you read this. This was the committee objective. And the next slide, Anna. The priorities and the parameters. Orion alternative, alternative will remain one school. And it's very important to understand, um, when Orion came to John Gill, it was very important that Orion kept its um, C D E school code that identifies each school. We had many, many meetings about this code and so that it would be one school. And it's not two schools on one campus, which each having their own code. Uh, so we have, it'll continue with that C D E code. Um, additional cost to the Redwood City need to be minimal. And here's where we had a lot of discussion with the Orion Committee. Two separate schools with anywhere from three hundred to three hundred fifty students is not cost effective for the district. And um, as we move forward and other information that'll be coming to you in a few weeks regarding the enrollment of where we are for next year, you'll probably start looking at what I just said on this slide and probably be asking questions of me, what's happening in the future. Uh, Redwood City School should have at least five hundred students to make it cost effective. And a Redwood City School requires a minimum number of staffing. So regardless of program families, we really want to express to them to commit to the TK five grade span, knowing that there is a pathway at the middle school. Not to be concerned about that. And then, of course, we know that inter-district transfers are not allowed. Next slide, Anna. So for the Orion growth plan process, we have, we had five meetings between May twenty twenty-four and April twenty twenty-five. This is what we reviewed with the committee. The school's current and projected enrollment and we did enrollment of what the demographer uh, has pointed out to us where we will be in the next ten years as far as enrollment is concerned. Enrollment, school choice process and wait lists at all Redwood City Schools. We, they wanted to see that, what the enrollment was at that point in time, what wait lists were for each school site. And also wanted to know off that waitlist, how many students are leaving and going to their school of choice? Or have left the district. They also wanted to see the school capacity and classroom use at all Redwood City School District Schools. And Martin and his team were really great about getting those out to each of them. And so we had a discussion about that. The committee also wanted to understand and to ask that if they were both going to remain on the school site and it were to grow, that there would be additional staff coverage and, and budget implications. And I'll go into what that, that means in another slide. One of them was recess, uh, another one was recess and lunch logistics. Because having X amount of kids, it's going to create additional yard duty. It's going to create additional custodial staff. And as we continue on with any type of after-school program at the school site where classrooms are being utilized, uh, after students leave, it would have to have additional custodial uh, service. Programmatic needs and priorities, they really wanted to keep those in the forefront. And they wanted feedbacks from family and staff. There was a survey that went out, but we only got seventy-nine participants that participated in it. We kept pushing and pushing. We got seventy-nine. So we used that. It was each parent at the school site received it and each staff member. So um, I can get that number for you. I don't have it. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. So the recommendation is, as, as you know, at this point in time is um, I, the recommendation for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. If you go to the next slide, Anna, is both programs on the co-op, both programs, co-op and Mandarin immersion remain at the Avenue Delora site. We're going to start out with three M I T Ks and the reason why for three, I've got numbers for three. Um, I have numbers for two. Actually, it's one point, probably seven, five of, for the, for the co-op. They're not having three and they understood that. There was questions that came out about that. And I said, the numbers don't warrant it. Um, so three M I T K will be in the former technology lab that's behind the library. And Martin has already confirmed with not only myself and site administrator, but also with the committee that the library can accommodate those twenty students, but it's bathroom uh, accommodations that are going to occur, right? So that's how. So that's happening and it'll be happen, it'll it'll take place before the kids even get here. The other thing is additional office hours for the office assistant. The parents on the committee and the staff around the committee. Along with Winnie said, there has to be additional office assistance hours. And so we're raising it, I believe, to another hour for for next year. And we're going to see if if it continues to grow, then we'll have to look at it again. And custodial staff, custodial staff is going to be extra too. The SLC class has moved already. I should not say that has not moved yet, but is moving and is moving to Henry Ford. And Mavis had all those meetings with those parents at this point in time. So this is where we'll be for 2526. And as we continue to move forward, what I want to really make sure is that we look at enrollment every year, and that's what we agree to. We're going to look at it every year to see where we are, just as we did in January, because January, by that cutoff date. January, people start enrolling. And I know Winnie said, is there a way that we could start doing it earlier? And I know the enrollment staff is trying to think if they can do it a bit earlier than they're what they're doing now. And and start her tours earlier. So we're going to see how we can accommodate that. And then the, oh, you've got the next slide. So this is just, you know, knowing that there's the possibility of adding a third MI kinder. We're already doing it for the 2526, no possibility. And all the, all of the programs, there are other programs that are on that school site that in order to accommodate them all staying there and use of all 29 rooms. I need to move the CDC. I'll need to move Odyssey and Catalyst. We haven't started those discussions yet. We will start them early, early, early in the fall because there are other school sites where they can go where there are empty classrooms. And the parents and the staff really want to make sure that Odyssey and Catalyst have somewhere to go that is not so far away. So that's where we are with this recommendation moving forward. I think it's a win-win for all that were on the committee. There were a lot of thoughts expressed at times was a little bit of heated argument because one program felt the other program was getting more, but I said, I can't look at it that way as a superintendent. I said, what I look at is numbers. Numbers tell me what I really need to do. If I turn away from that and not pay attention to that, I'm not doing my due diligence to the district. So we got past that and and still you may have gotten some emails. I got a couple that were not very happy with this. But I believe this is the best that we can do at this point in time for both programs staying together at the Orion campus. And the Orion campus, as you know, looks, looks great. I mean, and people really don't want to leave it and go somewhere else. And as I said earlier to another board member, you know, parents, teachers, they all love their stu, their school sites. They all love their school sites and don't want to leave. So this, I believe, is something that will really accommodate both groups. I just got to keep my eye on the enrollment. Questions? Any questions? Do you want to turn your microphone on? Yeah.
I forgot to ask this, but I'm assuming the school site council in there doing their facility master plan already kind of knew this was the plan for Orion.
They, yeah, they kind of got.
So that's planned into the.
Because there were committee members that were on this.
Yeah, okay. So that's planned into their suggestion and their recommendation for the facility master plan.
So I feel like this is a reasonable synthesis of a complex problem and what to do for next year and the year following. And the natural dot, dot, dot is like, but what then, right?
And then you, the year following, next year and the year after, it will probably be fine. It's that third year.
That's right.
And I think at that second year, you need to start looking at numbers early and deciding, okay, what happens next?
Right. So so I think it's super important, you know, I love Rick's calendars, right? They're very inspirational. I feel like we sort of need a check-in calendar here for what are the cut points where if the enrollment numbers are X, that implies action Y on year three, you know, and and to start spelling that out and gaming that out. So we kind of, we and the community kind of know what's coming in terms of our plan to have a plan, right?
Right. I totally agree with that. Because it's, you should not surprise anyone. And that's why you need to do this several years ahead of time. And by us, and you're going to see this, as I told a couple of board members that I met with this app. I met with several board members this afternoon, not a couple. I didn't forget, leave on leave out. That in a couple of weeks, you'll be getting where enrollment is for next, as at that day. And you'll be seeing how many classrooms at each school and how many grade levels at each school too. And we need to keep our eye on that. We really do. So that'll tell us, you know, what changes will need to be made, you know, sooner than later and have a plan in place.
Yeah, I think it's just really important that we work back anticipating that there might be some things come to a head three school years from now, like that might require some potentially very big moves and changes that might take a couple of years to play out. Like, how much time do we actually have before it's incumbent on us to make those decisions to enable that third year out to work?
Yeah, definitely. We can do that. We can put some calendar together. And I'll work with Winnie also. That's Winnie's involved. And then she could probably get the school site council involved too. So everybody, so it doesn't show like we're hiding anything either.
Any other questions? I had one just about classroom utilization. I think, you know, there's a few things that we should be really, really cognizant about. First of all, thanks for putting together the plan. And, you know, the growth committee that worked on it, district staff, this was a lot of time. Multiple meetings, lots of data in there. All the slides are available on the website. If you Google search for it for Orion growth plan, Redwood City, you'll you'll be able to find it.
And Mike, there are more slides than what I showed here.
Yeah.
I wasn't going to, because it's, you read the memo.
No, and pro tip is go to meeting number five, because each meeting has the previous meeting slides in it as well. Yeah. So if you go to the fifth one, you don't have to do what I did, which was click through each one until you realize at the end. But there's a lot of good data in there to to look at it. And I like that the process honored community voices, it respected fiscal constraints, you know, it presented you know, a reasonably short term, long term roadmap that puts stuff in. And then it reflected our commitment to, you know, quality, innovation, sustainability, all of that points. I do think though that classroom utilization is something that we should, you know, just check in on. I just, I don't, I don't have a good sense of how efficiently classrooms are going to be utilized under, you know, under this growth plan. Because the thing with two programs operating on site, I don't, I don't have to say this, but I'm gonna anyways, it's like the classrooms aren't fungible, right? You can't combine for one program and the other there. And so you end up with, you know, just because you might have, you know, 28 kids across a grade, that does, that that might be two classrooms because it's two different programs. So are we operating small, underfilled sections in upper grades? You know, are we using staff and space in a way that's aligning with our goals for sustainability and, you know, and equity across RCSD?
And that's the reason why when you see the enrollment numbers that are going to come to you in a couple of weeks, I've given, I want them out to you on on the 30th. That's my dipstick. You will see how underutilized some of our classrooms are. And what needs to, as as we look at moving forward. If, and I'm not just speaking here with this school site, but at other school sites, when you look at those numbers. We've got to come up with a plan of how to handle this.
Right.
And because we are in declining enrollment. I think right now we've got a bump because of TK, but that TK bump has got to plateau. And so when Jorge and I were working on this this past week. Jorge says, do you realize we're 100 kindergarteners short from last year at this time? I go, what? There are less.
Yeah.
100 kids less than last year at this time. I go, no, I didn't know that. So he says, it is different. And they went back several years and he says, we haven't been this low last three years.
Yeah.
So it's coming. It is coming. So we need to keep our eye on that.
Yeah.
Because classrooms are not, I guess, I don't want to just sound like a broken record. When you see those numbers, they're not utilized to.
Right.
The manner they should be.
Right, right. And so I assume mitigations are being considered around like combo classes.
Oh, yeah.
Within program, obviously.
Within program, within program.
Okay.
Mavis already been doing.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think Adelante had combo classes every year that my kids went through too. Yeah. Cool. You know, I appreciate that you talked about the retention of an upper grade. We just kind of touched on it a little bit. I don't have all the details of what you're doing for Kennedy. We're not going to discuss it tonight because that's not important here. But but I'm very curious because there's a lot of ways to interpret everything that you said there. So it'd be interesting to hear what's, how that's being planned and just making sure that that has, that there's an equitable access for people to get get into it. Whatever, whatever is going to be offered there. But there are good things going, being added, like the wind block. I guess, you know, this plan for Kennedy, I mean, are we gonna be, like, how are we going to measure it for tensions working? Is that?
So the.
I mean, obviously the numbers will have it, but it might be nice to know, like, for the families that stayed, why did they stay? For families that left, what made them, made them leave and see if we're actually moving it. Yeah, I mean, we know that what, we know where the attrition is happening. It's happening second to third grade, but then some families stay, some don't. And, you know, are we collecting, are we collecting data around that to say like, what's, what's the choice? Is the wind block helping? Is the advanced?
We could, we could start doing that. We have not done any surveys or any exit interviews with any of the families. We've not done that.
It's been done in.
Probably so, yeah, probably.
At the site. Yeah. And I mean, this isn't a district problem. This is, you know, they can ask at the site to figure that one out. Okay. Cool.
And I'll just, because I mentioned it and it's part of of what's happening for Orion. Orion, it's not Orion alternate, Orion co-op. I go back to alter. And before that, it was something else, but Orion co-op and Mandarin immersion. When we're talking in regard to this English class, it's going to open up for sixth graders. We are really trying this as a pilot because it will, if it's really successful, it needs to open up at the other six eights the following year. Because we do have students that are scoring at that criteria that we, it's not only, we have students that are scoring at that criteria that are not only students that are meeting, not feeding in, not only feeding into Kennedy, but our kids that are at Clifford. Our kids that are at MIT, Roy Cloud and Hoover. So if this works like we think it will, we're going to have to. When you're talking about equity, it goes all over, just like the advanced math. Advanced math is all over. If you're a sixth, seventh or eighth grader and you qualify, you're in advanced math, no matter what school.
Yeah, it's the hard tracking part. I just want to make sure that there's not like hard tracking that's rigid and made a decision based upon one day in fifth grade that then suddenly nobody can correct for. So I don't want to get into it tonight. Those are, those are the kind of things that I just.
Get it back and then we're having a parent meeting and all that.
Yeah.
And then.
Yeah, perfect. Perfect, perfect, perfect. Actually, yeah, one other thing, you did touch on this. Just the access to the program a little bit. Orion, you know, it's a, it's a really vibrant community, but it does have a lower proportion of unduplicated students compared to a bunch of other schools. It's not inherently bad, right? But it does sort of raise that question of like, you know, is this accessible to all families? You know, especially maybe those with like language barrier or or digital access or anything like that. Is that part of the outreach that?
That's part of the outreach that Winnie wants to do. And so Winnie's going to do something similar to what Northster has been doing for the last couple of years.
Yeah.
And so she wants to do that. So that's why she is asking if we cannot, if the enrollment department can't start a lot earlier than it has in the past. And so Jorge is working with his team to see how he can get that working.
Okay.
In that direction.
Yeah, because if you're going to expand for growth, right, we want to ensure that the growth's inclusive. And, you know, not just reflective of people who know how to kind of navigate the system.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Cool. Is there any, any other comments, questions? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the Orion growth plan.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great.
Great. Thank you.
Let's look at this board and superintendent reports. Who would like to start?
I went on a tour of KIP. I was invited there warmly and connected with staff there. The Fair Oaks Street in front is just absolute madhouse in the in the morning, just in that narrow window of drop off. The county, they're they're in unincorporated San Mateo County and they have not formally done a safe routes to school analysis. Seems like that it could really be needed, honestly. It is pretty crazy.
We should contact the county office.
Yeah, yeah. So I've nudged them to to go and do that. Let's see. EL achieve is working pretty well for them for English language development. They've got a cool teacher training program where you can get a temporary credential in a year. And you're, the only requirement is that you've, you have to have a BA. Lot of families scared right now about what's going on vis a vis immigration and the like, and that's causing some school attendance reticence, which is an issue. There's some perimeter issues. They, it's pretty clear that the school site gets unauthorized use regularly on weekends. And so the staff come in in the mornings and there's like beer bottles around and the like. And so they needed a little bit of extra help securing the perimeter there. Yeah, we had some conversations about handoffs to and from the district. I'll write up some notes and share those over. And that's, I'll write up the rest of this later, but those are sort of some of the high level bits. But it was really nice to get to connect with some of the charters in addition to the the regular schools here in the district, just to see what's going on. And ways in which we're working well together. And I actually think we have really positive relationship with our charters versus advertarial, which is great. And there's a lot of eagerness to even further deepen that relationship with the district and kind of share best practices. Because we're serving very similar audiences of students. So like, what of their approaches can we learn from? And then similarly, what approaches are we using that they can learn from as well, that better serve their their students? So it was a very positive visit.
I always forget. So I and David Lee went to the LCAP meeting that was held at the Fair Oaks Community Center. I forget what day because I just wrote them down. And then I also went that evening to the DLEC meeting that Catherine held over at Hoover. And she, actually, it was the first time that I've been to the DLEC meetings where we actually had a lot more parents than in prior meetings. So kudos to the team for involving a lot of our parents and for the parents to actually make it to those meetings. I was also the superintendent advisory committee this Monday with Dr. Baker, Rick. And I don't even know what day I live in that I forgot who else was there. Martin, yes. Sorry, Martin. And then I attended the celebration of the induction program at Henry Ford. So that's also great. So and that's it for me.
Got a few things. San Mateo County is doing the school funding task force that I attended with with Mike and there were only a few sessions, but it was interesting just to hear from other board members around the county, from other districts, just on issues that they're facing and school funding obviously is a persistent one across the board. And so trying to 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 figure out how we can collectively attack that. But that's an ongoing thing. So it was just good to to hear it from others. I had the good fortune of also attending the field trip for one of Hoover's half of, I think they're eighth graders. Where they got to do some hands-on learning, which was fantastic. I was speaking for myself. I thought it was fantastic. There's a lot of great learning, both on the academic side as well as the actual practical. And I could tell that there's a lot of engagement from the eighth graders. And you could tell that there's both the, I mean, there was discussions of like electromagnetic fields and all that. And as learners, like, oh, this is like way better than when I learned it. But then I like the, the students, like they were learning and then they're putting into practice. I could tell like when they actually got their hands on, there was like a, a light bulb going on of like, oh, this is cool. Like, let's do this. So I thought that was great just to see that happening. I know that there's a lot of coordination that was involved there, I think with Mr. Malian, Ms. Castro from Hoover and obviously Lupe. But then I think also from the county office in terms of providing transportation. So very grateful. I understand there's maybe some. There's an effort to get the other half of the eighth grader, just continue the program, which I personally think would be great, just to get the exposure. To see that there's a range of career possibilities out there, just to to know that. And then, of course. And then, of course, very grateful to, to local four sixty seven for putting that on and hosting them just. I know it's a lot of effort, but it was, I thought it was a great experience. Did a couple of school sites visits as well. Sam Kinley, it was great, always great to see Bee. We obviously had the presentation the other day, but a lot of reiterating the same things, which it seems like. I think my sense is that she's, you know, getting her bearings and there's a lot of stuff happening this year. And but it was, it was really helpful for me to hear her thoughts on like the vision already going forward of what she wants to accomplish. So it's just a lot of forward thinking and something that I really appreciate, just that we're always, we have, we have a lot of great staff who are working and thinking about what the next step is and not just staying stagnant. And, you know, we always have plenty to, to grow. Also went to Taft, very similar things, great, great staff. I think one, one thing that I hear was that steam was super important. So there's super highly valued, a lot of things that we've heard across the board as well, just in terms of quite a bit of resource allocation needs for, for sped, which I know the district, Dr. Ray, I think you've already mentioned this. There's ongoing work to help ease that for the school. So I'm sure that's very appreciated by the schools. But, you know, something that's just a recurring theme. Also went to the, as Cecilia mentioned, the LCAP thing. And I thought it was great to hear a lot of the engagement of the, the folks who were there. I would, I would personally love to increase the engagement even further. I mean, just, we need to serve our community, obviously. But for the folks who were there and Lupe who was there, it was great to hear all the engagement there and the thoughtfulness. And obviously, all the work that I put in, in Catherine to, to put all the presentation together was really helpful. And then it was like a long list. We, I went to the Kent Awards with several of the others, including Mike and Dr. Baker. It was great to have our Orion staff honored. And then, yeah, I think, I think that's it.
Ah, good. Thanks. You reminded me of so many. Yeah. Congratulations to the parent participation program for their Kent Award this year. That was all, it's always fun to be there and see everything get recognized, just like at the induction colloquium. Although my favorite part is not the recognition as much as important that it is. It's sitting at the table with the part, and I tell this to Nicole every year, where the men, the mentees and the mentors tell you what they learned and they both learn, right? Because it's incredible. Like, you're not just born knowing how to put classrooms into small groups and working with one while the others are working independently. You know, you need to be able to taught how to do that. And it's just great to hear those kinds of stories. We also had, I was just before this, I was at the Healthy Cities tutoring volunteer recognition. There's like eighty volunteers here. I know they're pretty active at Henry Ford. It sounds like they're going to follow Principal Knopf to Garfield.
They're active also at Taft.
At Taft, yeah, okay.
They're doing. English speakers.
Right, right. That's right. Yeah. Yeah. It's nice to recognize them there. And then we had a citizens bond oversight meeting, which, if you want, they get posted online. You can watch the video on YouTube or I'll give you the brief summary. There was a, they elected the chair and the vice chair, which is Carl and Jennifer again. They're work, still working on the annual report for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, which will come to the board when they have it finished, but it hasn't been finished yet. And that's both for Measure T and Measure S. They did review bond expenditures and progress and an update on the facilities master plan. And the next meeting's in August. So that means, you know, I, we wouldn't see the annual report till, if it came to them, by then it wouldn't come until after that for us. I think I got everything in there, Rick. Keep me honest. Okay. Dr. Baker? Great. All right. Let's move on to information. I think we can just go through these unless people have questions. Maybe we'll just do, take the first one and two individually, and then we can do the interim reports up to date. I don't know. Does anybody have questions or comments about the credit card summary or the investment fund update? Rick's here to answer them all. Far away. Okay, information's received. And then let's do the next three together, Rick, unless there's something that you think you particularly need to call out. These are the reviews of the interim financial reports for the three charters. Fourteen point three is for Connect, fourteen point four for KIP and fourteen point five for Rocketship.
I would just say thanks to the staff that go through these diligently to produce this. We're still closely monitoring all of our charter schools and look forward to their adopted budgets to bring back to the board later this summer.
Yeah, it's an additional ask of the business office. Not every school is an authorizing agency for charters and we are of three. And, you know, the LCFF doesn't actually throw money in per adminis, you know, office staff that has to be able to do that work. So I really appreciate the work that they do there. It's some, I guess it's a glimpse of what it looks like at a county office because they do it for our interim report. And you have to do it here. So yeah, I appreciate that work. Okay, great. Let's move on to correspondence. You want to know correspondence? Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I think, I don't know if everybody, some, some of the correspondence we get is, you know, we're BCC'd or that, not sure if everybody gets the, the notification. But I know, I just wanted to say, I know Megan, at least I got an email from her. Again, I didn't check whether she emailed everybody else. And she was here earlier with her proposal about the whole advanced class. So I do want to say, I do read my emails. I not, not always respond, but I do want to just publicly say that. And then there was another parent that emailed about the Orion growth. There was a concern. And so those are the, yes, those are the only ones.
All right, moving on, other business or suggested items for future agenda? I don't have any, doesn't look like anyone else has some. So then the board meeting's calendar, has there been any changes to the calendar?
No, the only one that I'm trying to, trying to put off site on, like in place.
Okay.
Like we talked.
Yeah.
Talked to everybody about this. I'm working on calendars. I'm trying to get our calendars now because we have training with the principals that we're doing right after school. And I'm trying to get that. I, I think by Friday.
Okay.
But definitely by Friday, I'll get something out.
By Friday. Okay. All right, that'll be good. Yeah, I think we could use, use the time for deeper work. All right, we're at adjournment. We need a motion to adjourn.
I move, we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Perfect.